Ted Tarsh, Mason County Commissioner.
Karen Tress, County Commissioner.
Randy DeLone, County Commissioner.
And then Marissa Watson, Long Range Planner.
Chris Eberhard, Public Works and Utilities and Land Management Director.
And Steve Dunkel, County Attorney.
Steve.
Travis Adams, I'm the county minister.
Steve Travis.
And that's Chris.
Yeah.
That's Chris.
And there's Deirdre. Hello. Deirdre, you're gonna turn the camera on to here so you can wait. All right, Kelly, do you wanna just give us kind of a brief overview of where we're at and why we're doing this?
Sure, so the Mason County plans under the Growth Management Act, as we have since for about thirty years now. And Marissa Watson, our long-range planner, has been working with SCJ Alliance, our consultant, on updating this comprehensive plan. We are required to update the plan every ten years. So this is a 2025-2045 comprehensive plan, has required elements by state law. And then we have a couple, a couple extra elements that we do, the economic development chapter, and the Parks and Rec Plan, which was not updated this go-around, but those are optional plans that the county has chosen to have. And the Health and Human Services is another one that Dave Wyndham updated this year. Marissa and I have been working with Erica Marbet for the past couple of years and have met. And we've implemented some changes that Erica has recommended and we agreed. But then there were some things that we thought, you know, this is above us. And we wanted the council and commission to get together to discuss those and see where we wanted to go with that. And with that, I'd like to leave that to Erica, because she knows better than I do on what those remaining items are that did not go into the plan that Marissa and I had.
Sounds good, yeah. I don't know if you wanna open up first or if you want me to set the ground.
Sure, well, first, again, thank you for meeting with us, really appreciate it. This government-to-government discussions are so important, not only as two sovereigns, but just, you know, I think we're friends. And we all have a common goal of doing good for our community, because we're all related here. So that's important, and, you know, as Squawsons, when it comes to these things, we have opinions. And we're gonna share them with you, and we may not agree, that's okay too, but we still wanna put forth our opinions. And a lot of the things that drive us, if you don't know, is gonna be regarding our natural resources. It's really our connection to our past, that's how we honor our ancestors, is making sure that we are taking care of what we have in front of us, really so that we can share it for the next generation, just like all of you guys. Many of you are generational people here of Mason County, and I imagine that you want the beauty of Mason County and the water and these trees and all this stuff. You want your grandchildren to enjoy that as well, not unlike us. And so it's important that we are stewards of the land today. And so that's why we're always looking for ways to, it's hard in today's society, but we're always looking for ways to leverage that as much as we can where we can, because we lose those battles all over the place. But where we can, we're gonna do it. And so what we're looking at specifically here is regarding wells and well permits. And we recognize that, we know that, and we just, we wanna be brought to the table with this, and that the wells do have an impact on groundwater and the aquifers. And consequently, we have an impact on our streams. And that's where we come in, because we're all about our salmon and water quality and stream flows and cold, fresh, clean water. All those things are important for the salmon to survive. And, you know, interestingly, I was at a summit just on Saturday, a water quality summit. And I got to meet this guy by the name of Kevin Hanson, he's a hydrologist at Thurston County. And we were just having a conversation, and he was telling me exactly that. I was asking him about wells and the impact. And he was saying that there are streams in Thurston County that are no longer streams because of the mismanagement of permitting wells for many years in Thurston County. He took ownership of that, because they, for many years, they thought that the wells didn't impact the streams. But they do, in fact, know that they do. And so that's where it's important, that's why we have these rules, that's why we have the GMA, that's why we have permitting processes. And that's why we keep an eye on these things, so that we don't run the streams out, which negatively impacts the overall ecosystem and the habitat of the salmon and other things as well. And so that's where we're at, we're not trying to be sticklers or anything. We just wanna make sure that if there's one thing we could do, and this is one of them, we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards and we're being responsible with these types of things. And so I think when it comes to the science, and Erica can kinda speak to some of that stuff, but I am thankful. I've seen some things, some progressive things that you guys have done there, where you guys added some forecasting tables in there, which was really helpful, nice to see that you're looking at that. There was a Water Quality District that you guys created, I thought that was awesome. I was like, way to go, Mason County, this is fantastic, this is important stuff, you know, that you're doing and bringing the community together, and looking at these things are important in your decision-making. That's so fantastic. And so I recognize the work that's being done, and sometimes not popular work, but I recognize it, so I'll leave it at that.
Can just add something?
Yeah.
You know, been around for a while, a few councils on my side and a few commissioners on your side. But I've enjoyed watching the collaboration and the working relationship with that, and even on the personal level, getting to know you. One thing we do have are really good staff that is willing to work together and look at those pertinent things. I just appreciate your guys' ability to say, okay, this needs to go to the commissioners and to the council. The other council knows that the chairman is here, and they're taking care of other responsibilities. It's not a fact that they didn't prioritize this, they just had other things that they had to do as well. So just wanted to point that out, and I think we're really close on the comp plan. When you have these plans, though, a lot of times, it's so important that you don't lose certain pieces, you know, and that it's documented, so it will help us and guide us. Because we develop, as well as you know, being the largest employer of Mason County. And we take that responsibility really strong with a lot of commitment. Many of our employees are, you know, families that are non-tribal. But when we develop, we really make sure that we're committed to developing in the right way. And we always state that, because we're not against development, we're about doing it in the correct way and following laws, so.
All right, so, yeah, to add to that, actually, it's been a good, it's been a good few years of working and fighting together on water resources. So this is just an asking for your review of a few steps and a few phrases or pieces into the comprehensive plan. So context, there's a few sayings that will help us understand it. One is salmon spawn in groundwater, or you could say salmon rear in groundwater as well. So we all know that we had a long, dry summer, the only thing left in the streams is groundwater. And then as we have a late arrival of rains, remember it was Halloween before we really saw rain, that means Chalm and Cove are arriving to spawn in low creeks, so every drop counts. The other thing is that wells draw groundwater, and groundwater is what feeds creeks, right? So there's a connection. And our science is progressing, and we're gonna catch up our planning, we hope to, with that science. Next is that we have this memorandum of agreement that we all signed, and then we signed an addendum. And I'm just gonna read the purposes, there were two purposes of that MOA. One, to provide a scientific and regulatory framework to mitigate for and offset development as provided under RCW 9094, and other applicable laws. Two was to provide a scientific and planning framework to protect, restore, enhance impaired and stream resources and improve watershed functions, excuse me, that support anadromous fish resources. So there's our foundation. And we pretty much completed the MOA, the last piece was to incorporate elements into the comprehensive plan. In the MOA, the county did work that was a simple inventory, it was like a back calculation. If you have parcels that are over $10,000 in value and have a septic system, they likely have a permanent exempt well, because there's no literal inventory of rural wells, only this estimate. And the county did that estimate, and they did it by basin. So in the Oakland Bay watershed, in the Mill Creek watershed, there are this many existing wells. And then furthermore, in the stream flow restoration planning process, the county estimated the forecasted future wells. All right, now let's get to the comp plan. The tribe has asked, and we've, you know, we've talked at length about inserting those, the, like, what we have now and then what we think we're gonna need in the future into the comp plan. And the county has inserted the what we need in the future, that's a table, let me make sure I noted right now, table three point, or section 3.5.9, and I can't remember the table number count, but it's page 65. The county's done it, and that's the work from our shit planning, they took it from that document, put it in the comp plan, check that box. Two more things, one is put the table that says, this is our estimate of wells by basin. Right now, the county has in the comp plan, just a straight-up, 10,123 wells. We would like to see it explicitly by basin. The information exists, we'd like it in there, and the reason is that water resource management happens by basin, every basin is different. And I mean every watershed, right, Skookum, Mill, Johns, Goldsboro, all of those. So we'd like the county to explicitly list it out by basin, so that's one thing. Finally, we'd like the county to take, to use an active tense, and I'm just gonna read that sentence, I think it'd be better. So there's some passive language in that comp plan, and we'd like it to change to active. This is the active language. Mason County will develop and finalize offset projects to offset consumptive use of permanent exempt wells. Right now, the language is like, it's something like, there is a list of projects. That's it. And so we'd like to see that, those are the three things.
What is that, what's that?
Let's go on my phone, sorry.
As she's finding that too, we can give you examples of other counties that have used that language and have created.
I actually, no, I, for myself, I actually understand, but at the same time, I'm just, I'd rather always be straight with you guys and stuff. There's a restriction that comes with that specific verbiage. And what happens when you start separating them out that way, you also put a limit on what could be maybe built there in the future, and that's what the tool would be used for. Maybe, I'm just spitballing though, guys, maybe it's something along the lines of having something a little stronger that says we will endeavor to offset, and then put, again, I'm nobody or nothing, just wanted to take those things and separate them out and put them into an appendix, so we have something that we're just looking at for our references on how to do it, but not making it legally binding at this point, because my job, as you can imagine, is to protect the wealth and the ability for them to be able to build on their properties and not lose their value and everything else. So I've just thrown that out there for you guys to think about too, but I definitely understand where you're coming from, and I don't completely disagree. I've learned, you know, you remember, we had some great battles when it came to the wireless. And in my opinion, we had somebody on one side that was there for the poison pill the whole time. But there's an education that comes with battle, and I learned some pretty impressive stuff. One of the things that I learned in this, my personal belief, and I'm not speaking for the county, it does have an effect on the rivers, the wells. The reason why, I live up in North Mason, I can use the Tahui River as an absolute perfect example. Two things affected that, the way we logged around it and silk coming into the river, and the idea that we put these houses where they were set away forward, so it ends up finding its way to the bottom. And I have areas of the river that don't even exist at times of the year, it's still there, it's just underneath everything. So I am aware, and I do, it doesn't matter to me, just so you know. But I also need to temper that for my own personal protections of the ones that I represent. I just wanted to throw that out there to you guys.
Is that page 65, or is it paragraph?
Yeah, yep.
I always appreciate Randy being, never, yeah, we always know where you're at, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Any comments?
So, I get it, and I do also appreciate your candidness. The one thing that I would say for you to consider in regards to that is, yes, you always want to make sure that you're protecting the landowner in yourself, that you're not making hollow promises. And so when it comes to being able, we need placeholders, so people don't get the impression, because there's been a lot of education around this, and there are examples where people bought property with the presumption that they would be able to develop, and we know that you have to permit. There has to be quantity there. So when we're looking at these items being in there, they're placeholders for the county in the planning to, and they're consistent with law, that will not be something that's far-fetched out there that necessarily is gonna tie you, but it's more of a guiding principle of you have to consider this in regards to being able to permit, because so many landowners have been put in a predicament where they were under the true assumption, and I don't think we have done them well by making sure that the permitting process educates them. So that's the one thing I would say. And I know what you're saying about fishing, the rivers, you know, underneath there, and fish don't live underground. So that's the importance.
Not that we know of.
Yeah.
All right, and then just a few of that, but why don't we, do you wanna read that language right there, so we can?
Yeah, currently, it says, yep, the watershed plan also outlines eight different project types throughout the watershed that would provide an estimated offset of 1,725 acre-feet per year. This would produce a net ecological benefit. And so the, that is in reference to the Department of Ecology's Watershed Restoration and Enhancement Plan that they adopted once we didn't have consensus at the wire level.
And personally, I think, again, I'm just Randy, it was three of us personally, I think we can endeavor to start to work towards those plans. And if it's not said, then it probably won't ever happen, but if we say that, maybe that's a happy medium, we come in between and we put the other part in an appendix, but at least we're saying that we want to work on it, because I, again, I'm just speaking for me, I do want to work on doing that, I don't wanna just forget it, I do know that there's an issue with some of that. But at the same time, this allows us the time to find that answer. What is the answer, how can we do it, you know, can we in certain areas have an agreement that joint wells, maybe a larger type of joint well than we currently have, that we can endeavor to maybe have six hookups or something to keep the property value in a certain area or something like that? I don't know what that answers, I'm stretching to do it, I'm just saying, if we're not working towards it, it won't happen. But if we can agree to work towards it, then somebody will teach us the answer or we'll teach ourselves.
Understood.
Kelly, remember reading something, there's a very large document, so I can't tell you what page or whatever, or anything. But I remember something in there, where's it, maybe, that spoke about wells and how there was thought about that already in there, so, or was I reading a WASAC document, I don't know.
I mean, I think there's like seventy references to wells in the document, yes, which is why it's hard to keep track of.
Page 66 does have, you know, the summary of the steps, it's, I mean, it's very general right now, but it does talk about consent, continued support for water availability will be, within the county will be to secure funding and implementation of offset projects within waters. So it's very general, it doesn't, but, you know, next step is getting, finding the funding.
Right, right.
What page was that again?
That's page 66, of the version I'm looking at here. So it should be at the very end of the wide list section.
Okay, so maybe here? The next step is for continued support of water availability within the county will be secured funding and implementation of offset projects within Rias Planning under RCW 9094, okay. Yeah, so, good start, I think this is the specter we don't want. We don't want five, and when's the next county, your comprehensive plan update?
Thirty-six, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a twenty-year plan, and then so twenty, thirty-five.
There's no, there's no updates in the middle?
We can do annual updates, we can do once-per-year updates to certain sections.
And that, I was thinking like five or ten, so basically what I'm saying is like, we gotta arrange a time upfront. If we get to the next update and there has not been progress, then we really do have a problem because it's about preventing drying of creeks like the Tahui River, right, or the Union River, I'm sorry. What, are you talking about Tahui or the Union?
Tahui, but they're all connected, I could tell you, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate it, but at the same time, holding us into a place where we are stuck to it ends up creating a fight between us two. I've been around long enough, I've seen it, but one thing I do know, we've got something that most don't. We got together, we worked on some verbiage to work together, and we've actually been good partners with you asking us or trying to get us to do a certain thing, and us allowing ourselves to also be willed into that direction to make things happen. I don't know that that's what it used to be like, because I remember when I first came on, it seemed like it was very, everything we did was adversarial. Now it doesn't seem like that.
It seems better.
Yeah, and it would seem to me that the idea of, that we will, you know, endeavor to or something like that, we've already proven between each other that we can work together and be steered together for the future in getting there without a hammer to the head, just with a carrot with each other. And so, again, just personally, I'm supportive in that matter, I'm always gonna have to stand in a way to protect us if we feel like it ends up putting us in a situation where we have no choice, and then we can legally be challenged to have no choice, and then we end up in battles with each other I don't wanna have or have. Again, I was there, you guys are great partners, we've been great partners, you know, couldn't be better, always.
No, I think, and these meetings are very beneficial, so if we do some things that need to be changed, there's nothing saying that, black and white, yes, but it's also color, but we can always amend or do more addendums or whatever, so it's not, it's not something that's not to be commended, so. So we can work together on what we need to, if there's a situation that comes up that needs to be changed with us communicating like we are now, will you have me for four hundred days, just saying?
I can tell you something funny, I actually have a vision of right now, of her sitting there, and I was like, no, you said we will endeavor to get this. I know she will do that, and it will, I know you will, and it has, it has a positive outcome when we do that together. So I can see it, that's the reason why I said it, I know you, but you're not gonna be hiding out, you'll sit there. But you also, when we first met, you were a lot stronger, how should I put it, saying stronger, a lot more movable, just like we were. But you definitely are, I hear nothing but great things of working with you, so.
Great.
That means that, and I know you don't always agree with this, so that means that we've learned to work together.
That, that's a good thing, yeah. I think it, I'm not gonna, I still request the active language, but we don't have to, nobody has to make a decision right now.
We're just putting it out there, for you guys to know where we're at, so you understand.
Appreciate that.
The active language, and even the word endeavor, it means that you will need staff, like, you will need competent staff to help you endeavor. And so it is a commitment, and so I'm just pointing that out.
No, I see it as one as well, I see it from the other, from page 66, so I see it as that we will go after grants in order to try and put some stuff together in order to make that happen with the support of the tribe at the legislature, asking for the same thing, as we've done before. And we have, we've done that, the same thing during the Y-Round discussions.
Great.
What else you got, first?
Well, let me review my notes just to make sure I don't forget something that is very relevant. Another thank you, so, again, in this theme, I've talked with Dave Wyndham about co-funding the Goldsboro Streamflow Gates. And now, thank you, the county is committed to co-funding that along with the City of Sheldon and the tribe. And that's a burden off, a financial burden off of us, like, to share. But I'm excited about that too, because part of getting a handle on water resources is you don't know what the creek is, its flow is, like, whether it's good or bad unless you have a long record, and for Goldsboro, we now have a twenty-year record. And that's a start, right, obviously, weather, weather patterns are decade, decadal, but, thank you. You're helping us collect the record that's gonna, and like, do the science that's gonna inform our future decisions, so thanks for that. And then just, I think maybe I'll just circle back, that last table, guys. So this is the table, and it's not in the comp plan right now. The comp plan states on page 65, I think, that the county currently estimates approximately 10,000 wells in Ryan 14. So it's just Ryan 14.
So did you create your own table, is that what you have?
Your consultants, your consultant created, and I have it, yeah.
Can I take a peek at?
You bet. And so that just lists out the number of wells by basin, and so.
You wanna know where.
What's that?
You wanna know where.
So we, yeah, so we know where, it's just like you list out the number of households or the population by population center, it matches the theme of the comprehensive plan.
So what if, that's part I was, I was talking about earlier, what if that was put into the appendix, so it's actually there for us to look at and refer to, it doesn't put a hammer to where we're nailed to it in particular, but we know that that's what we're working at, and that's what we're working with.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, and it's about keeping that as a placeholder, so people don't lose it. We know the information that we've found, you know, and it's not lost information, yeah, so.
Nine thousand of those wells are all on one, you know, watershed that's a problem.
Yes, yeah, some have more wells than others, right.
Well, out of which we've had some waterships where literally we've had major problems, and we've had to look at coming close to non, not building, but we found ways around some of that stuff and found an agreement so we can allow for building to go, and so instead of battling, we made it happen.
That's right, and those offset projects are the ways of the future, yeah, so.
One thing I didn't, before the battle, if you wanna call it the wire thing, I did not believe that the wells were having the effect. I honestly did not believe the science that I was looking at was different, but once we got in those rooms, we started going over all of it. Some things are just so simplistic, you can't deny it, even if the numbers say differently, you know that it's having an effect, just because you gotta believe your eyes too, so.
So this is in the Y-Round 14?
Yes, this is where it is, exactly.
Okay.
But the table is from the McDonald Word.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
But you guys have a copy of this.
Yeah, and that is, those are, that's identifying the existing wells, correct?
Correct.
Because this table is the future projected.
That's right.
And so that is the existing from that.
Do we feel that that's accurate enough to where we could have it comfortably in an appendix?
It's as accurate as we're going to get, it is an estimate, like, like Erica described, but it's the best, it is the best available data that we have.
If you told me, nope, it's wrong, I hate it, that'd be different, but you're saying that it is.
I mean.
As good as it gets.
Yeah.
So we could add this to one of the addendums.
Yeah, they do an appendix.
Could we add it?
We could put it, we could put it in that chapter, I thought, too.
Right.
Because this is still a draft.
Because we already talk about the total, and it, all it's doing is outlining the basin.
And just put it above it that it was an example that was provided by such and such.
Yeah.
As long as we say that verbally, we're protected.
The information, yeah.
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 Okay, so you have that, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, well, again, you've earned this, this isn't something we're just, we've had some long times and long battles on it. You guys have been great partners, and you've given us a great education, but you also helped us to get some of these things, some of these solutions, so.
3.5.9.
That's what it is, is.
That's what it is, is in being frank, in each other, that's what happens, so.
You can have this to, it's, I think.
There was a letter that you sent.
Yep, and I just want to make sure that, yeah, the reference is to section 3.5.9. I'm just going to find it. No, it's, we, yeah. Yes, it is, okay, so, I don't know, actually, I'm afraid that the sections have changed and the page numbers have changed, so I can give you this, and then if you could double check with Kel.
And then if you find that it's different, you can just send it to Kel.
I wouldn't worry about it, she would put it in, or we'll add it to an appendix. Either way, it's going in, in some forecat.
In conclusion, that will satisfy those mandates of the Growth Management Act that require protection. It will, it's a good step towards satisfying those pieces of the Growth Management Act that ask for groundwater and surface water protection, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it, appreciate the time.
Yeah, yeah, this is great. I would love to continue meeting.
We talk about that, we do, we need to.
And I still want to come out and tour your sewer.
Yes, come out, yes, you're.
I'd be excited about, I'd be real excited about touring the sewer plan.
Yeah, I'd be excited too.
Yeah, absolutely, we should do that.
I love infrastructure.
Me too.
Me too.
Yeah, it's amazing, no idea until I got into the job, like holy smoke, this stuff is fascinating.
Right, yeah, I'd love to see how it works, but getting back to the comp plan, sorry.
No worries.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If you haven't gone, if you tour the, Mike question, Dan.
I've heard, yeah.
They're producing millions of salmon. And it's, they're bragging about, they've restored salmon to streams that have been extinct of fish for over 20 years. So they're really, it's, it's pretty incredible what they're doing.
We're on the verge of delisting summer chub and that's unheard of. We're that close.
Millions of little fish, you know, from egg to, you know, it's, you know, that, it's really impressive. If you get a chance, you should.
I will, I will, I'd heard that before, I will definitely do that.
So on a different note, as we're going through some of this stuff, with the salmon stuff, just something to consider, one of the things when I was on the County Quarry Council in the past, and I'm back on it now, there's a focus that got lost, it wasn't just salmon, but somebody came in and explained to us the dynamics of the eelgrass. And it's one of those things, like we said, it's obvious. At some point, it doesn't matter, well, to me, it's always been obvious that it's a symptom, yes, but it's also a cause. When you take a plant out that's creating oxygen and stuff like that and creating a habitat, or you are losing it, either way, the idea of replenishing, it might be something to think about. And I know the County Quarry Council, I've been talking about it again, has taken that on as a project that said adjust the salmon because it is connected, so let's keep that in mind.
We are, we are, actually have a partnership with DNR and a nonprofit on studying both eelgrass and kelp. And we have a huge kelp field just south of Squaw's Island, and we're seeing it get slowly depleted over the years. And it's no coincidence, it's corresponding with, you know, the acidification and all this stuff, the death of our waters, right? And so we're doing a lot of studies on that because, I mean, that kelp and that eelgrass is like molten ore.
Well, we remember when we were young enough to walk out there and pick up crab for our dinner, literally pick it up or lift the seaweed to get the little tiny kelp. That's a thing of the past in parts of our waters.
Yeah, fascinating, thanks for bringing that up, you're right on.
Agreed, yeah, and we've got projects in Oakland Bay similar to that as well, so, yeah. Let's keep doing that.
Yep.
Thanks guys.
Great.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion, because we're officially still, Madam Chair, would you turn?
All right, where's your?
Again, thank you guys so much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.